Father, we thank you for this day in the city in which we live, goddesses afternoon, as we make our decisions. Christmending. I mean.
This is the January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty, regular meeting of the Noonan City Council. You have the minutes from the two thousand and twenty public, the public hearing on the budget that was held December the tenth, two thousand and nineteen. Before you, I'll entertain a motion on those minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. We adopt the minutes as presented. All in favor? Posed? Motion carried. Thank you. You also have the minutes of the regular meeting, December the tenth, two thousand and nineteen. I'll entertain a motion on those minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. We adopt those minutes as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor? Posed? Motion carried. Do you have anything today, Mr. Phillips?
Mr. Mayor, since we got a good hit today, just want to make an announcement or reminder that both tonight and Thursday night, six P. M. tonight at the Noonan Center, six P. M. Thursday night here, we're going to be having a public input session on the Noonan Entertainment and Sports Facility. So anyone who's interested in coming out tonight, Noonan Center, Thursday night here at six P. M., love to hear your feedback.
Great. Thank you, sir. I don't have anything today. Under unfinished business, Mr. Murray, we have status reports on two eighty West Washington, eighteen Berry, and Sixth Glen Street, and then a couple of other items. How are you?
Yes, sir. Doing well, thanks, Mr. Mayor and Council. Hope everybody's well. Status reports, two eighty West Washington and Sixth Glen Street are progressing and moving along nicely. Eighteen Berry, not much happening there now, but I expect that to be changing very soon. The developer who is working on eight and Glen Street has issued, put down earnest money to that property to Mr. Moten, and he was waiting to have one of those properties sold. He did sell eight Glen. He's working on Sixth Glen and is speaking with the developer and with the agent. They are planning to move forward quickly on eighteen Berry. So we should have an update on that one soon.
Okay. All right. Any questions, Council, regarding the issues? All right. And then next, thirty-three Hardaway Street owner update and request for extension.
Yes, sir. I did speak with the, there's nothing happening right now on that. I did speak with Jenny Smith, who's one of the family members, and she is requesting a thirty-day extension. They are trying to resolve the issues they have with the family as far as potentially distributing funds from a possible sale. She said she felt comfortable, they were very close, and that she asked thirty days to finalize that. So I think in thirty days, we'll know kind of where this one is heading, so.
Zero motion.
So moved.
Second. Motion is second. Grant the thirty-day extension to thirty-three Hardaway Street. Any discussion? All those in favor? Posed? Motion carried. You're still up with fifteen Elm Circle?
Yes, sir. I did speak with the owner, Mr. Frost, last week. He's done quite a bit of work on the property exterior-wise, interior. He's still got a little bit to do. He's requesting sixty days, and he felt like he would be completed with the project. He does have crews out there consistently working, and so I feel confident in sixty days he'll have this one wrapped up, so.
Zero motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second, and a motion is second. We grant the sixty-day extension on fifteen Elm Circle. Any discussion? All those in favor? Posed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Then next, a consideration of an award for professional architectural service contract for the pickleball facility. Mr. Craver, how are you today?
I'm well. I hope you are. Mayor Brady, members of the council, I'm here before you to recommend that the city engage H. Gore as the contractor to perform the services as outlined and requested of staff at the October twenty-second meeting.
Any questions to Mr. Craver? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second. We award the contract as recommended by staff. Any discussion? All those in favor? Posed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
The first agenda we have here, what we're doing here today, we have a first agenda to finish up last year's business in just a second. I'm going to adjourn that, that agenda, signee die, and we'll move right into our new agenda for the year two thousand and twenty. There are two people who signed the signing sheet to speak to council today that I believe are off agenda. The first is Ms. Norma Hayes. Is Ms. Norma here? This would be your opportunity, Ms. Norma, to come forward and address council. How are you today?
Fine. Thank you so much.
Good to see you.
I just, I'm Norma Haynes at fifty Woodbine Drive, and I just want to thank the council for what you did to make this the most special Christmas I believe we've had in Noonan in a long time, with our trees and with the support that you gave us in decorating the trees, the town. And I wanted to ask you if there is any reason why we can't keep our lights on on the weekends as we have done for the last two or three years. These new lights we have put up, we chose because they guaranteed us two years, three hundred and sixty-five days, should we choose to light the trees. And I've only been in town, I've been away for three months with my daughter, but the last time I was in town, about a week ago, it was on a Friday night, and the town just looked dead. And it, it really broke my heart because our town has just got so much going for it right now. And on Friday and Saturday night, it's just alive with people going into the restaurants and enjoying the town and walking around, even in the rain. And I just wanted to see if the council might approve us to go back to lighting our trees on the weekends, on Fridays and Saturdays, if possible. I'd also like to say, while I'm here, we are so fortunate to have the leadership in this community that we have. We've got our mayor, our mayor pro tem. We've got all of you who have supported our police department, our fire department, and let me just say, they, we've got the best public safety in this whole state of Georgia. And I applaud you for supporting them, and I applaud them for what they do in our community. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Norm. We appreciate those kind words, and we agree with everything you've said.
That's wonderful.
Does her concern require a motion, that we make a motion to have the lights on?
Well, I do recall that during the process of accepting the money and raising the money and doing, we had a conversation about not turning on the lights on the weekend. I don't know that we actually said, "Don't do that," but certainly a motion now to say, "Do do that" would be appropriate because it would certainly be an official action. Second. Motion is second. Any discussion on this? What we're, what we're talking about, obviously, is turning on the lights on the weekend on the trees and not during, not during the week. So it would be a Friday, Saturday, Sunday night.
I asked the question, and supposedly it was because we didn't want to be always lit and it'd be more special, but I don't know the right answer. I mean, I like it on the weekends especially.
Yeah, I do, too. So the motion.
One thing to keep in mind, and we're happy to have them on weekends, even though we were guaranteed, they don't work perfect all the time, and even at the end of the holiday season, we had a few trees that we were having trouble keeping on, not because of the lights, just because of the switches and the breakers and et cetera. So there are going to be times where there are trees off, and I don't really recall in my building maintenance on the weekends when the trees are off. So we've got to remember that if one of your trees are off because of the issue, that we will address it Monday.
Sure, you'll figure out how to around noon on Friday to check out all the trees.
But if they go out, that's okay.
They go out. I promise you, they're going out during the holiday season, and you'll get a call about trying to fix them on weekends.
Tree goes out, that's like, the light bulbs just, we get, we get that. So we have the, we have the motion, I have the second. Any other discussion on them? All those in favor? Posed? Motion carried. Thank you, Ms. Norm. The other name on my list here who signed that they wanted to, to speak to council is Carl Ware. Mr. Ware?
Yep.
Are you?
There you are.
You'll come forward, sir?
Thank you very much.
Sure. How are you today?
I'm great. Thank you. I am unfamiliar with the procedure here, so I didn't know whether this was the most appropriate time for me to comment on an item that is further on in the agenda, or if this is.
If, if you're in our second agenda and want to speak to an item in that agenda, then we'll wait till then.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No problem. Okay, so at this point, we have no reason for an executive session. I'm going to adjourn this meeting, signee die, and we'll immediately go into our first meeting of the year two thousand and twenty, the call to order and invocation we've had, and the reading of the minutes we don't have because we have no minutes from this, from this year. The swearing-in ceremony would be the first thing that we have in this, on this agenda, and we have four council members, Paul Guillaume, Dustin Corretco, George Alexander, and Cynthia Jenkins, who are going to be sworn in today. And so, Mr. Sears, are we doing that, we're doing that front and center? So, lady and gentleman, if y'all will join the party out front, there are some people who.
Will be swearing some others in, and I would suggest that Mr. Corretco was wanting to have Judge Stotley, and I don't think he's here yet. If we could move him to the last.
Okay.
All right. And Mr. Guillaume, I agree that he's aware of Mr. Guillaume.
That's fine.
If you want to stand here, I don't know, because I want you to face the camera because you're being escorted by a bus there. If you'll raise your right hand like you left hand on the Bible, I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully and truly perform the duties of council member of this city, that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Georgia, and the Charter of the City of Noonan, to the best of my skill and ability, and as to me, shall seem to the best interest and welfare of the city without fear, favor, or affection. I do further swear or affirm that I am not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money due this state, or any political subdivision or authority thereof, that I am not the holder of any office or trust under the government of the United States, any other state, or any foreign state, which by the laws of the State of Georgia, I am prohibited from holding, and that I am otherwise qualified to be a public officer according to the Constitution and the laws of the State of Georgia. So help me God. Congratulations, sir.
Ms. Jenkins?
Oh, okay. of council member of this city, that I will support and defend the United States Constitution, the Constitution of the State of Georgia, and the Charter of the City of Noonan, to the best of my skill and ability, and to me shall seem to the best interest and welfare of the city without fear, favor, or affection. I do further swear or affirm that I am not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money due this state, or any political subdivision or authority thereof, that I am not the holder of any office or trust under the government of the United States, any other state, or any, any other foreign state, which by the laws of the State of Georgia, I am prohibited from holding, and that I am otherwise qualified to be a public officer according to the Constitution and laws of the State of Georgia. So help me God. Congratulations.
Mr. Alexander.
I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully and truly perform the duties of council member of this city, that I will support and defend the United States Constitution, the Constitution of the State of Georgia, and the Charter of the City of Noonan, to the best of my skill and ability, and as to me, shall seem to be the best interest and welfare of the city without fear, favor, or affection. I do further swear or affirm that I am not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money due this state, or any political subdivision or authority thereof, that I am not the holder of any office or trust under the government of the United States, any other state, or any foreign state, which by the laws of the State of Georgia, I am prohibited from holding, that I am otherwise qualified to be a public officer according to the Constitution and laws of the State of Georgia. So help me God.
Mr. Corretco.
If you'll raise your right hand, I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully and truly perform the duties of council member of this city, that I will support and defend the United States Constitution, the Constitution of the State of Georgia, and the Charter of the City of Noonan, to the best of my skill and ability, and as to me, shall seem to the best interest and welfare of the city without fear, favor, or affection. I do further swear or affirm that I am not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money due this state, or any political subdivision or authority thereof, that I am not the holder of any office or trust under the government of the United States, any other state, or any foreign state, which by the laws of the State of Georgia, I am prohibited from holding, and that I am otherwise qualified to be a public officer according to the Constitution and the laws of the State of Georgia. So help me God.
Mr. Mayor, for the minutes, all of the newly elected council members have been duly sworn in and now authorized to take office as council members of the city.
Thank you, Mr. Sears. We appreciate that. Okay, let's get to work. The next item on the agenda today is the election of Mayor Pro Tem.
So I'd like to make a motion that, based on our, historically how we've done it, and also other cities, and just to share some experience amongst all of us, that we, that I nominate George Alexander as our senior member, and then just rotate by, via seniority.
All right. Have a motion.
So moved. Second.
And a second. Any discussion?
I do.
All right. Ms. Jenkins?
Ladies and gentlemen, it has been my honor to serve as the Mayor Pro Tem of the City of Noonan for the past fourteen years. And as Mayor Pro Tem, I have represented the city and its citizens with, when the mayor needed me to do so. I have served at the pleasure of the council each of those years, and did so to the best of my ability. In two thousand and six, Mayor Brady approached me and asked if I would serve. He told me that after two years of working with me, he thought I was capable, held the respect of many of Noonan's citizens, and it was time for a woman to take a place of prominence in the leadership of the council, to demonstrate the progress and inclusivity of the City of Noonan. For fourteen years, this body has graciously reaffirmed that stance. Changing the occupant of the Mayor Pro Tem position is and has always been a decision made by this body. However, this motion goes beyond that and has moved into the realm of a change of public policy. I understand that there has been a conversation about this among council members, and truth be told, I am not sure if this is the best way to administer the Mayor Pro Temship. In a simple search, I came across several options. Rotating by seniority is one of them. Some rotate in two-year terms. Others don't rotate at all but are elected by the citizens. Another method is to rotate by district rather than seniority. I found this to be more appealing. The district rotation is because seniority changes as the council makeup changes, which has the potential to create a disparity in how often a particular district is represented in the Mayor Pro Tem rotation. Although my research is limited, I believe that if we choose to rotate, then rotate by district provides a way for us to implement this process in a manner that is fair for the citizens across the City of Noonan. As you can see, there's a lot left on the table to discuss. Our usual process of public policymaking is to bring our ideas to the table and concerns in the public sphere. Get our professional staff involved, including our city attorney, thoroughly vet those ideas, then and only then move forward with a vote. Until that process has taken place, we have not done our jobs. And more importantly, we will not have done the right thing. In the words of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., "It is always the right time to do the right thing." That right thing is to go through our process and include the proper due diligence, process, and inclusion of all voices at the table. This, gentlemen, is our practice because it is good governance. So I would, I would ask that you go through this process like we always do, and hand this off to staff to come up with and use our resources, such as the Georgia Municipal Association and the National League of Cities, to tell us what are some of those best practices. Just because this was done forty years ago doesn't mean it's right now. However, I do appreciate the fact that you're examining this process, because the truth is, we've only had what has been in the charter, which does, it tells us what we have to do, doesn't give us really any guidelines on how to do that, and we've been implementing a practice that we just kind of inherited. So looking at this is actually wise, but doing it this way is not the right way. So I ask you to deny that motion.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor and a second. And if there are any further discussion, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, motion carried. Now, what I'd like to do is instruct, instruct staff to put on our work session what Ms. Jenkins has just outlined, taking a deep dive, not a work session, but our work, in March, we're going to have a work session.
Retreat.
Yeah, February, I mean, yeah, our retreat, to take a, take a look at this, and I'm, I'm not sure how much time it's going to take, but we need that on our agenda in February to take a look at this and, and compare what our ordinance says versus what our charter says.
It's set out in the charter.
Pardon?
There's a reference in the order. There's a reference, there's a reference in the order, but the charter says the mayor shall be elected as provided in the charter. In other words, our mayor is elected in the regular election. The city council at its first regular meeting date in January of each year shall elect by a majority of all council members from among its members a Mayor Pro Tem who shall serve a term of one year, both the mayor and the mayor itself. It's set out in the charter, so, I mean, we can still do what you're suggesting.
That's correct.
But in, in order to.
The charter doesn't set out, the charter, though, does not set out the process we use to determine how we pick that person.
Well, it just said you shall elect at the first meeting.
So that's, that's what Mayor Lieutenant Jenkins, I think, is asking for, is, is what is, what is that process? Is it in fact by seniority, or is it by district?
Some other way.
Or some other way. So I think it's worthy of the discussion. We've had a motion and a second, a motion carried. Having said that about the, the work session in, in February, we'll move forward. The next item on the agenda, the appointment of department, of city officials, department heads.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to represent that all current department heads be reappointed.
Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion is second. We appoint all current department heads for the year two thousand and twenty. Any discussion? All those in favor? Posed? Motion carried. City attorney. Zero motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Did I actually hear his last name?
Yes.
Okay. He's, he's sitting right there. Brad Sears. Okay. All right. Motion is second. We reappoint Brad Sears, the city attorney. Any discussion? All those in favor? Posed? Motion carried. Municipal court judge?
Make a motion to approve. Judge Clay Collins?
Yes, sir.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Posed? Motion carried. And municipal court judge, Pro Tem at this time is Rufus Smith.
Then I make a motion to reappoint him.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Now, we have several appointments to boards and commissions that are next on your agenda. The first of three appointments to the Parks Commission. The first one is mine and Yancey, and I would like to reappoint Ms. Yancey. Second. Motion is second. We reappoint Ms. Yancey to the Parks Commission. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. The next two of three would be Mr. DeVos.
I'd like to reappoint Mr. Martin Smith.
Second.
Motion is second. We reappoint Mr. Martin Smith to the Parks Commission. Excuse me. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. The third of three would be Mr. Krickco.
Going to have to ask for that on the next agenda, please.
All right, thank you. The next three appointments to the Planning Commission. The first is mine is Mr. Clay McIntyre, and I would like to reappoint Mr. McIntyre.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. The next, Ms. Jenkins.
I need that put on the next agenda.
All right, thank you. And the next, Mr. Shell to the Planning Commission.
Put on the next agenda, please.
All right, thank you. Okay, the next item then is one appointment to the Housing Authority. This is my appointment as mayor and it's a five-year term. I'd like to reappoint, and it doesn't need council approval. I'm not looking for a second, it's just an appointment. Mr. Otis Jones III. The next item on the agenda, two appointments to the Tree Commission. The first is Mr. Krickco.
Next agenda, please.
All right, thank you. And the second is an open appointment that will be put on the next agenda, please. And then the last item is an appointment to the Cultural Arts Commission. This is Joanne Harvey, resignation accepted 11/26/19, term to expire June 21. This is Mr. Krickco.
Next agenda, please.
All right, thank you. All right, that takes us through those appointments. The next item on the agenda today under Operation of the City Manager is to schedule the city floating holiday for 2020. I understand this is November the 17th, 2020?
February 17th.
I mean, I'm sorry, February 17th. Correction, duly noted, February the 17th, 2020. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried, thank you. I don't have anything today. The next item on the agenda is the 2020 Pay Plan Resolution. This is before you, is our motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second. Motion is second to adopt is presented. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. The next is a minimum speed restriction update and radar usage. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. How are y'all? Good. I'm not going to hold you up long. We just have to bring this to you anytime we update new speed limits or ask them to be changed by the Georgia Department of Transportation. They have granted those, they're in their packet. The main one is McIntosh Parkway. We've added the certified speed limit so that we can run radar out there. And it's about everything that we've got on that.
Thank you. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, council approval.
Is there a quick question? Are there any other changes?
If there are, the signs were probably already up and we're actually just cleaning that ordinance up. I don't, I believe there's one, but I don't remember which one it was. I can report back to you if you would like that, sir.
That's fine, thank you.
All right. So there's a motion is second. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried, thank you. The next is an ordinance to provide for the adoption of a budget, its execution and effect for the fiscal year beginning January the 1st, 2020, and ending December the 31st, 2020. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. We adopt the budget for 2020. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried, thank you. The next item on the agenda is an ICMA RC loan agreement. This is an amendment to the loan agreement. Mr. Phillips, can you give us a few seconds?
Yeah, just for a real quick background, the city offers a voluntary 457 plan. A lot of people are aware of the 401K plan. It is a little bit of a difference, but in short, our 457 currently drawn does not allow our employees to take a loan, which is very common in the 401K process. We recently met with full 457 representatives and we asked why they can't take a loan from their investments. It isn't our money. The city does not put any money into it. We don't manage. And the 457 representatives said it's because the city hasn't elected our employee to be allowed to receive stuff. So therefore, that's what is currently regarding the documents that will allow our employees to take a loan out against our 457 contribution. Obviously, there's retained schedules in the documents. Obviously, there are act penalties that they don't meet the schedule, but my position is that it's 100% their contribution, they should be invited to take a loan against the 457 if that's what you want.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the agreement as presented. Any discussion?
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
I was just thinking about this, the interest that's charged, is that credited to their account or is that for administrative purposes? Do you know offhand?
Oh, no, it's in their account, not administrative.
Okay, so it's basically they're paying themselves back. Excellent, thank you.
All right. Call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried, thank you. The next item on the agenda today is a public hearing. This is application for alcohol beverage license, ARA Foods LLC, DBA Newell Grocery, retail off-premise packaged sales of malt beverages and wine, 46, I mean 45 Robinson Street, Suite A. The reason for this is a new business, we'll open a public hearing at this time and ask if there's anyone here that would like to come forward to speak to this issue of this alcohol application. Okay? Phil, identify yourself, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Councilman. Mr. Mayor and Councilman, my name is Matt Hornum. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. If we can address any questions, we're happy to do so. I have the applicant, Mr. Islam, here with me as well.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hornum. Is anyone else? I saw a hand go up. Yes, ma'am, if you'll come forward and state your name, please.
Hello, I'm Carol Newell, and I am the owner of the property on 45 Robinson Street. I want to tell you that my husband, my late husband, William Newell, ran that grocery store. You don't have any idea how important that store is to those people in that area. I would appreciate it very much if the license is granted. Atik is a wonderful person, and he's given a lot to the community. And the people in that community in and around the Boys and Girls Club on Savannah Street, they are so very proud to have that store open. Thank you very much.
Ms. Newell, we appreciate your comments. Thank you for being here today. Okay, anyone else? I'm going to close the public hearing at this time. It's obvious that someone is here representing the applicant. Ms. Dell, is everything else in order? All right, everything else is in order, or I'll entertain a motion on the issue?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. We approve the application as presented. Any questions? Comments? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you all for being here today. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing for minor amendment to the capital improvements element, CIE Short Term Work Program. This is a public hearing for that. Good afternoon, how are you, sir?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and council members. At this time, the city is requesting to amend the 2019 Capital Improvements Element and Short Term Work Program in advance of the upcoming 2020 Community Development Block Grant Application. Per the minimum standards of the planning process, all local governments must hold two public hearings prior to amending the CIE or Short Term Work Program as well. The purpose of the first public hearing today is to advise the public that the city is undertaking a minor amendment to the CIE and Short Term Work Program portions of the comp plan to discuss the purpose of these documents and also to welcome community input on any issues. The second public hearing will take place at the February 11th council meeting. At the second hearing, the updated document will be presented to the council. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. As mentioned, this is a public hearing on this issue, and this is the public's opportunity to come forward and speak to the issue of the minor amendment to the CIE and Short Term Work Program for 2019. Seeing no one come forward, I'm going to close the public hearing at this time. No action is needed today, so we'll have the second public hearing as indicated in February. The next two items on the agenda, Mr. Murray, you're back up with 69 ML King Jr. Drive and to set a public hearing date for February the 25th, 2020.
Yes, sir, these properties, the property we've received some complaints about, and we're just asking for a public hearing at the end of February.
All right. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second to set the public hearing date for February 25th, 2020 for 69 ML King Jr. Drive. Yes, sir. Okay.
Back to my appointment, I want to go in.
Okay, all right. So we'll go back to that in a second. I have a motion is second to set that public hearing date. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. The next item on the agenda is 21 Berry Avenue, the same issue of setting a public hearing date, February 25th, 2020 on 21 Berry Avenue. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. We set the date. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Mr. Shell, you wanted to go back up.
Yes, I want to go back to my appointment on the Planning Commission. I want to appoint Mr. Fred Hamlin.
Second.
I just got a text from him.
Okay. Motion is second. We reappoint Mr. Hamlin to the Planning Commission. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried, thank you. Under visitors, we don't have anything left on our regular agenda. Mr. Carl, Mr. Ware, you said you had a...
Mr. Ware, the matter that...
Mr. Ware, if you'll come up to, the sound system will not pick you up.
Yeah, that's okay. The matter which I came to speak on, you've already acted upon, and I think any comment that I have at this time would be superfluous, so thank you.
I hope it was resolved to your sense, sir.
Well, thank you so much for the opportunity, Mr. Mayor and Council, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, the next item then on the agenda would be ask if anyone else is here today that had anything off agenda that would like, who would like to come forward.
Mr. Mayor, if I may be heard?
Yes, if you'll state your name for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Kimberly Burrows DeBrow. I live on, at 59 Wesley Street here in Nuneun.
How are you?
Good, thank you.
Good.
I don't mean to take up too much time, but I did want to address you as well as the entire councils. Good afternoon. I, my husband and I, like I stated, live here in the square, off the square. We're both attorneys. We are involved on multiple charitable boards here in the community. My husband owns a business, a law practice here, and we are raising a two-year-old daughter and intending to continue to grow our family here in Nuneun. We moved here several years ago, and we have committed to make Nuneun our home. And a reason for that is because we believe that Nuneun is in good hands. And so regarding agenda item number, excuse me, agenda item A, I'd like to be heard on the decisions to elect by the council the Mayor Protem position for the upcoming term. While I understand and I certainly trust the wisdom of this council and body to decide what is the proper order as well as procedure and how that item in the charter will be decided, I'd like to, if there's going to be any work sessions or any other further discussion among this body, whether it's an executive session or otherwise, I'd like to implore this body to consider some things that may otherwise not be so apparent. And this is what the perspective, this is the perspective that I have to offer to this discussion. I'm raising a young black girl here in Nuneun, and our community is very diverse. And the service of Councilwoman Jenkins for the past fourteen years is, has been significant. And despite our charter not outlining the reason or basis from which we select, or excuse me, the council selects its Mayor Protem, the city's Mayor Protem position, I would implore this body to consider what the significance of that position can have for those in our community, particularly our young black girls. I'm currently the president of the Georgia Association of Black Women Attorneys, and through this organization, I study and focus on how women and girls are affected in this state, particularly those of color. And so whenever this body discusses the basis or the procedure or the mechanism in which it will continue to elect this body's Mayor Protem, please just keep that in mind, that this community needs to see good representation in our elected officials, among our elected officials, as well as those in our community who are representing our community. Today, I'm not sure what the basis was, but it seemed very unceremonious to simply adopt a new procedure and based on that procedure, whatever it is, identify and elect a new Mayor Protem. And it almost seems as if it did not acknowledge the fourteen years that Mayor, excuse me, Councilwoman Cynthia Jenkins has very well served in this position. So if no one else were to say it, I just want to stand here and also just acknowledge and thank her for her service for the fourteen years. And for the citizens of this community, including the young black girls who are going to grow up in this community, I ask that you keep them in mind when you're deciding the decisions of, this decision and how it's going to be decided. Again, I trust your wisdom. I have engaged, been engaged as a citizen of this community, and I certainly do trust that this body will come to the best decision and the right decision. And whether that is to be, to have Councilwoman Jenkins in this position or not, I do trust that it will be the right one. Please keep in mind what I have, I've implored you to consider as well as those considerations that are important to this community. Thank you.
Okay, then what we're going to do is just go around, see if anyone has anything. We do have a work session next on our agenda for the issue of insurance. We may change our insurance plan during the year 2020, and we have some folks who are coming here to do a work session for that. You're welcome to stay. It's a public hearing. It's just an extra item on our agenda that we put at the end, so just in case you didn't have a desire to stay and listen to the actuary with no... Mr. Bose, give me...
I'm good, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm good, thank you.
I don't have anything, Ms. Jenkins. Thanks, Jamone. Okay, we're going to give you a second if you need to step out, and then we're going to move into this work session on our insurance for 2020 and going...
Very well said.